Aren't we?
Welcome to the June 2 Spokane City Council Study Session. We'll call this meeting to order. And we have a couple of things on our agenda, first being our planning ordinances. So I'd like to call up Amanda and Tammy to present. And council members, if you would wait till the end of the presentation to ask questions and then wait to be called, that would make me really happy. Thanks.
Good morning, Council. Thanks for having us again. Amanda Beck in Planning Services and Tammy Palmquist from our current Planning Division. So we are proposing-
Amanda, can you make the screen a little smaller there on the right? There, thank you.
Sorry about that. So city staff are proposing amendments to the fees that we charge for short subdivisions or short plats, which create up to nine lots. Have a quick overview of how that process works because the fees would be reduced for each step. You start after your Lancer Ban. You would submit for a preliminary short plat application. This is reviewed administratively as a type two permit by staff. And then you would move on to the engineering construction plans to make sure that any necessary infrastructure is in place and constructed and move on to the final stage, which is your final plat. And that'll reflect all of the necessary requirements that were reviewed at the preliminary stage and any necessary improvements that create the actual sellable lots. And then you would record with the county auditor. So our existing fees are regardless of how many lots you create. You could create two lots or nine lots and your fees would be that 4,325 plus $60 per acre. And that's also regardless of how complex the short plat might be. Under the proposed changes, we would be reducing short plats that require a simpler engineering review and then also reducing for the final plat if it's under a simpler engineering review as well. So the logic being there, we are reducing for those simpler plats because they don't require as much staff time. Our engineers aren't reviewing for as much stuff. This also aligns really well with another code change that we'll be bringing before council this month where we are changing the notification for short plats. So we have drafted code, which is in your packet, where we are simplifying the notification process such that neighborhood councils are still going to be notified during the determination of complete application. But if you are going through a minor engineering review, we will discontinue mailed notice and there will be no site posting. And then if you are going through a standard engineering review, which might mean you need to extend right of way, you need to extend mainline utilities, or maybe there's an easement involved in the plat, that would require the mailed notice to the adjacent properties within 400 feet, but no site posting. So we've tried to streamline this process so the code is reflecting in both the fees section and the notification, and we think that these align very well. So this allows us to charge appropriately for the staff time depending on the complexity of the review and reduce where possible, again, trying to encourage construction of more housing. So if we're simplifying the process for notification, we're lowering the fees. We're hoping that that fee is then, you know, that reduction in fees getting passed on to the end user. Were there any questions? I wanted to leave plenty of time.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, council member.
Just wondering how you guys came up with the amounts that you're charging?
Let Tammy speak to that.
So the 1,085 is currently our type one fee. And so it was kind of in line with the amount of effort that's consistent with the type one application. And so that's where we came, why we chose that number.
And then the other question I had is, so to comply with the minor option, there can't be any extension of utilities. And so I guess I'm wondering just from your perspective, how frequent is it that you would do a short plat and there wouldn't be any need to move utilities?
To do a main extension?
Yeah.
So I took a look at the past, from 2020 to today, of how many plats we had processed. And you said it was 35.
So we had 35 in the last two years that Tammy looked at. And over 50% of those short plats would have been qualified under this code change as a minor.
Okay.
So over 60%.
And just pick up on something, you said water main extension. So is that what we're talking about, is extending the main?
Main extension, not individual taps.
Okay, so that doesn't have anything to do with-
Nope. Tap, a tap is a tap. Every lot needs a tap.
That's very helpful, okay.
It is just those main extensions. So where you have to rip up the road, extend a water lane, water main or sewer main to 10 feet past your property line, that takes engineering review. That takes time and we need to make sure that our staff are compensated for that time. If there's no main extension or no easements or no, you know, funky water, right, issue, then we should pass that savings on and hopefully the developer passes that on to the homeowner.
No, I get it. And this is a vast improvement, I think, over the previous version that we had considered last year. The last question, though, is just in terms of the overall cost, so for the minor engineering review, so you've got 1,085, how is it different? I mean, what is the level of effort that's different from that versus just a lot line, boundary line adjustment?
So a boundary line adjustment, usually our engineering group is looking at can they be served with utilities? The code doesn't allow us to condition a boundary line adjustment. So we will say, hey, you're going to create this lot, but here's how you're going to have to get water to it. And it may be a main extension, but we can't condition the boundary line adjustment to do that work. It will just be, you know you're going to have to do this when you come in for that home permit. So our engineers are telling them what they need to do, but they're not reviewing any of those engineering plans.
Okay.
With the short plat, we actually get those water and sewer plans. And so we're looking at the exact detail. We're looking at the slopes and the connections and all of that. And so it is more review than just a boundary line adjustment. You're actually looking at the technical drawings.
Gotcha. Okay, that's helpful. Thank you, guys.
Councilmember Wilkerson or Stratton, do you have questions?
No, thank you. This is-
Do we have any questions, virtual questions? Councilmember begs, council president begs?
He says no.
Says no. Boy, tiny voice. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else you want to add? Or we can approach you if we have questions later on because that's, I've had some folks email me about concerns on this, on the notification piece.
I, you know, I was here when we added neighborhood notification.
Yeah.
And Donna has done a lot of education with neighborhoods on how to be a part of the land use action. When is the appropriate time to comment and be involved? And what are appropriate comments to make? And she just recently did another educational session with Community Assembly a few weeks ago and provided those neighborhoods with that PowerPoint presentation so they can disperse that to their groups, too. So it is a constant education to make sure that they know how to be a part of the process the right way. And providing us with comments like, I don't like it, is not helpful.
Yeah.
But we do still want it to get out there so people are aware of because that is how we hear of unique things that, you know, we're not on the ground there. We don't live in that neighborhood. So we are looking for comments like, hey, there's a spring here. Did you know that? Or there's a wetland or, you know, this happens seasonally. Like, those are the types of things that we do really value from the neighborhood. But there, so that process is still there. The neighborhood can still participate.
Great, thank you.
I'll just add to that. Plan Commission, I feel like, had a very robust discussion about this at the May 11 Plan Commission hearing on the short plat notification draft changes that we're bringing before you. So once this is on the agenda, I have a whole packet of public comments that we've received, both prior to the May 11 Plan Commission public hearing and then following that. So that'll be a part of your packet as well.
Okay, good to know. Thank you. We need two sponsors to move this out of committee. So Wilkerson and Cathcart. Okay.
Is that for all three ordinances?
Yes.
What are the other two, sorry?
All three that they just briefed.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm fine.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move to our ARPA discussion and have Council President Beggs, who's sun tanning in California, set us up for this. So Council President, you want to go ahead?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thanks.
Yeah, well, hello, everybody. And so this is our working group, our ARPA working group. We've been working to figure out a way to get all council priorities in front of all council and get some feedback from them. So we're just about to go into that process. But before I talk about that, and you've got an email about it, I want to talk about sort of the end of it because that's probably what people think about mostly. So next week, we're going to hear the mayor's priorities, similar to the pitch for our priorities. And then we're going to have a newsprint sheet listing all the priorities that council members have submitted along with the mayors. And council members will have stickers and they can put their preferences on them. It's not, it's not a vote. That's not what it's for, but it's meant to visualize what would otherwise just be oral comments. So, you know, we could all spend time saying, all right, I like Councilmember Stratton's number three and Councilmember Cathcart's number two. And we could kind of do that. But the sticker exercise is meant to just visualize it so we can see it. It's not the vote. What the ARPA work group will then take that feedback and put together an SBO for the next tranche to try to get something that we think at least four, hopefully more, council members will support. And then when that SBO comes forward, that will be the time if people have amendments they want to make and somehow we didn't get the temperature of the group correctly, people can do that. So that's when there will be an actual vote on things and opportunities to either take things off the list, add things, change the funding amount, things like that. So that's what the sticker exercise is for next week, just to let you know. It's not, it's not binding. It's not a vote. I did talk to City Legal to make sure that we were fine in terms of open public meeting laws and other kinds of things, and they endorsed that. So today, what we're going to do is we're going to take turns and I'm not sure who, what the order is, but Councilmember Kinnear will ably facilitate. And each person will have 10 minutes to just give a pitch of why they're interested and what they're interested in. The proposal ideas are in the spreadsheet that you've gotten before if you have more questions. I think there's also, you know, sort of another question of how much money to go into each project and council members can talk about that. But again, that's kind of down the road a little bit. So I'll stop talking for a moment and then see if anyone has any questions about what we're up to today.
Questions for, go ahead.
Well, yeah, one question I have, and I don't know if Matt's on, maybe Matt would know, but I'm wondering about kind of citizen input that we've gotten over the last kind of 12 months and where that's being collected and stored. I've got like notes from the town halls and stuff like that, but there really isn't, that I've seen a spreadsheet that lists all of the citizen requests. And I'm just wondering if that exists somewhere and if we're going to kind of look at those or think about those at some point.
I'll turn it over to either Matt or Lisa. But I would say that anyone that actually submitted a proposal is in the spreadsheet that has been circulated to council. And if you haven't gotten a recent one, it can be recirculated. So anything like that, we've done. But in terms of capturing how many people have emailed which council members on which projects, I'm not sure that exists. But I'll turn it over to Lisa or Matt for anything else.
I'm happy to chime in. This is Matt. So Councilmember Cathcart, that's a great question. There has been a lot of data that has been collected through a variety of different ways. So just, just for everybody's recollection, there was the three community forums that I think you were initially referencing. Those notes were collected by administration. I believe Brian Connington still has those on file and they're able to recirculate those. I just actually saw those come up. They are very rough because they were, you know, they were in conversation format where there were different tables and people were, were kind of spitballing ideas at that point. There was also the ARPA community input email that was, that was idea proposals that were pushed forward to the city in very specific projects and very broad projects. That, that overall spreadsheet, I think there was 200-plus proposals that were submitted, was sent out to the entirety of council in that individual email that I had sent, I believe, last week with your, with your individual priorities. So there is that, that collection of data there. And then there was the thought exchange that Lisa presented on last week, which just kind of gives general ideas of what people are interested in. And I'll let Lisa chime in on that if she'd like, if she's on.
She's, she's not here.
Okay.
No, I, yeah, I think, thanks for the input on that. I appreciate it.
Does that help you?
Yeah.
All right. Any other questions for either, go ahead.
We can, we can resubmit that, or we could send out that slide deck if need be.
I, and I've got the list that you had sent out. I just wasn't sure if it had captured all of that other input from the town halls and all of that. So I appreciate that.
Go ahead, council member.
I don't know if Matt or Brean can answer this, but, so I have two questions. As I go through the entire list of all of the, Matt, where you broke it down into categories, there's a lot of these that don't have council sponsors. So how do we, because some of these are big priorities for me, but they didn't show up on my sponsor list because my name wasn't associated with the application. So how do we address those, I think is my big confusion. Does that make sense? I mean, how did those come to the surface that we talk about?
Yeah, so, I mean, really, that was the incentive behind sending out the overall listing to everybody was just saying, you know, you don't necessarily need to be a sponsor. It doesn't necessarily have to have that level of formality to it. It's, hey, this is, this is something that I'm interested in. This, this should be one of my priorities. You don't have to put a stamp on it through the proposal process. It's, it's more to bring that information to your attention to say, gosh, yeah, you know, that is something that the community does need and I want to get behind that as one of my priorities.
So, but my question is, as we talk about these today, so I was confused when I did this because what the lists that I got were just, was the list of, of the initiatives that have my name on it. But as we talk about this today, so if I'm looking under housing and homelessness, there's a lot of these that don't have a council sponsor. So how will those get to the surface of our discussing it and prioritizing it?
Well, you would just need to put them in your priority listing. So it would just, it would be, okay, that is something that the community is asking for, that's something that I want to put onto my listing.
Okay.
So that was the, that was kind of the thought process behind sending out that email saying, okay, here is your priority listing that you've put through so far. Here is all of the proposals that we've received over the past roughly nine months. Would you like to adjust your listing by any way, shape or form? Would you like to adjust your priority level, et cetera?
Okay, then I don't think that I did this right, but I will.
You'll get another chance.
I can add some things, too, because I just looked at the, I thought I was supposed to prioritize those that came in with, when I said, sure, you can put my name on as a sponsor. I didn't know I could go into the whole list and say, oh, I like this one, and there's no sponsor on it, so.
You're going to get a C minus today.
I'm going to get, I failed the course, but I'll do better next time.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you. And Councilmember Stratton, I hear you. So I don't want to get us too confused. So there have been allocated tranches of money, homelessness, all those requests or that have been sent to you asking for your support. Under that, there will be an RFP. So we can advocate, but this all has to go through a RFP process. So council members can kind of lean in, but I just want to remind, there is no guarantee because it is council sponsored that that entity will get through the whole process. So we got money for youth services, we got money for homelessness, I'm advocating small businesses, and there's a lot of things that fall under small businesses. We've got parks. So if you look at the categories, most of these items fall under some umbrella or tranche of monies. And when the RFP is written, those entities are encouraged to apply and it is still a competitive process.
Gotcha, okay.
As the money is deployed into the community.
Okay.
But doesn't mean you can't get behind and like really lean in because I think the community needs to know that there are things that really has elevated in our minds, like from where we sit, this is like, we need to be front and center for it, i.e. homelessness or youth services or small businesses. But again, just having the council name behind an item does not guarantee that item gets across the finish line.
And this is only the first, this is us talking about it the first time.
Right, yes.
We're going to get more chances. And we can go ahead and what, just to remind you all, we get, everybody gets 10 minutes. Now, the 10 minutes is a total. So you get to advocate for what you sponsored or what your priorities are and then leave time for questions. When your 10 minutes is up, boom, the block's going to come down. So advocate, be specific about what you're doing, why you're doing it, and then leave time for questions. Brean, we're going to put you last, if that's okay. Is that a thumb? Okay. It's hard to say up there.
And just a quick note, if I might. I just want everybody, and I think Councilmember Wilkerson just touched on it, I just want everyone to think very broadly when we're having this discussion, not individual projects, but very broad paintstrokes of what we can fit into an umbrella within those individual projects that you have in the back of your mind. What we can fit into the youth services tranche, what we can fit into the homelessness tranche. Is there another, is there another allocation that, that can fit quite a bit of these ideas and projects underneath an umbrella that we're not seeing? Whatever it may be, small business support, what have you. So that's, that's the only, that's the only kind of note that I would give when, when you're having these conversations and thinking about individual projects because I know a lot of council members are very, have, have a lot of projects that are near and dear to their heart, but they need to think in a more broad sense because just as Councilmember Wilkerson said, these all do have to go out to a competitive bidding process.
Thanks, Matt. All right. So we have, first up is Councilmember Bingle. He's not here today. Nicolette, did you want to say anything about this?
So Councilmember Bingle's top priority has been and continues to be police vehicles.
Okay. Short and sweet, thank you.
Short and sweet.
Any questions for Nicolette from the group? Go ahead.
So just a comment, so monies have been allocated for police vehicles.
Correct.
And they're just on order. So really, that request have been met, maybe not to the level that they would like it to be, but-
Right, they asked for 64, they got 25.
Okay.
Yeah, I think he's asking for the remainder.
For the remainder of the vehicles?
Correct.
Okay.
Of the request. And also, I think the electric vehicles are on order, but the hybrids, the window closed, they're not on order.
Okay.
They have to wait three more months, I heard.
Okay, thanks. Questions for Nicolette? Anybody? You were great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Wilkerson, you're next.
So I'm going to follow my own advice. I have two categories. I have a lot, but I have two that I'm really championing and I'm disappointed in myself that I did not bring these first. So my two priorities are small business and nonprofit recovery. So, and I'm just going to read some of the narrative from the Department of Treasury. Small businesses that face widespread challenges due to the pandemic, including periods of shutdown, decline in revenue or increased costs. The final rule provides many tools for recipients to respond to the impact of the pandemic on small businesses or disproportionate impacts on businesses where pre-existing disparities like lack of access to capital compounded the pandemic's effect. Under that, that looks like decreased revenue, financial insecurity, increased costs, capacity to weather financial hardship, challenges covering payroll or rent. to weather financial hardship, challenges covering payroll or rent. We know that a lot of our small businesses did not get PPP monies when it first came out, that window. So this is a little bit more broad stroke, and there's also very specific language to address disproportionately impacted small businesses. And those are businesses of color. So I like to see that go out. I keep hearing, they needed the resources yesterday, a lot around rental assistance for businesses. We hear a lot about for families, but businesses are struggling also because their revenue is down. So that's one I'm championing, and the other is assistance to nonprofits. Again, nonprofits have faced significant challenges due to the pandemic's increased demand for services and changing operational needs, as well as decline in revenue sources such as donation and fees. Nonprofits eligible for assistance are those that experienced negative economic impacts or disproportionate impacts of the pandemic to meet the definition of nonprofits. So again, nonprofits, decreased revenues, financial insecurity, loans or grants to mitigate financial hardships, special tensions given to nonprofits operating in qualified census tracts, and also with business improvement. I mean, capital buildings, those types of funds that are out there, I want to acknowledge that those nonprofits pivoted on a dime, and they did have CARES money, but we know those monies have gone and sold out. They've amped up the needs to meet the community. We just don't want to cut them off, because our community still needs those needs out there. Now, those are my two-in-one priority. I do want to go back to community centers played a big role, that's important for me. Support for unbanked or underbanked for community members building credit, programs for neighborhood business associations. Say yes to education is a priority for me. As we looked at planning ADU monies for assistance with permit fees, multicultural centers are important, minority businesses, again, community centers. Homelessness is a significant one, that we've already started allocating resources for that. So again, big buckets of money that really, we have cast the wide net. And my last little plug is, yesterday, we did our informational session on cultural incentive grants for nonprofits downtown. We had over 25 people attend online and in person to find out. So the excitement's out there for our community, for things that are creative. So we need things that we have to maintain, and things that we could stand up to give other entities the opportunity to grow. I'm open to questions.
Questions for Councilmember Wilkerson.
That was good.
That was really good. Go ahead.
Just, you threw a lot out. Is there, is there like, specific things with like, dollar amounts or anything like that, or, I'm just curious?
So in these small businesses and nonprofits, we are looking at allocating $3 million in each category. We are not putting a cap on it, because we don't know what the needs are, Councilmember Cackart, at this point in time. And especially for our smaller nonprofits, I think they know what the needs are, but we really haven't had a lot of feedback, except from a few, of what their needs are. And some of this ARPA dollars can actually go to capital improvement. And if you're in the nonprofit world, there is very little money for brick and mortar out there for improvement. So, no, there is not. So really, it's a wide net, and we're going to be as wide as we can to allow as many to apply for these resources.
Council President, did you have questions for Councilmember Wilkerson?
Um, yeah, I, I didn't have any questions. I just had a comment, kind of going back to Councilmember Stratton's, is that the nonprofit bucket is also another way of dealing with a lot of the different requests out there. So, and, so I just wanted, I, I strongly support, I've helped develop a, a model for both the small businesses and the nonprofits, and so, I just like it. Thanks.
Go ahead.
I have one more comment. As we have allocated funding for these various tranches of monies, you know, we're just taking our best educated guess is what the needs are, but our one example is childcare. It came back that we needed to increase that bucket of money immediately. So as we go forward, we may be coming back, adjusting the amount of funding that's in these various tranches that we are trying to meet the needs. Nonprofits may be definitely one of them.
Okay, good.
I have a question for.
Questions.
I just wanted to clarify, Matt and I got an email from Mark last night to add an item for the Office of Police Ombudsman for the, for new walls and remodels to their office. So I just wanted to make sure if you wanted that added to your.
I do want that added. So the Ombudsman Office, which is located on the first floor of City Hall, has no privacy. And they have said, when people come in and want to share their experience or file a complaint, they do not have that to provide to our citizens. And they would like privacy, because they have said people come in traumatized, and to sit in an open space and to share your experience is not the healthiest way to get that done. So it, it's not a little money, it's $80,000, but it will help build walls up for confidentiality.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just, on, on that, I mean, I'm certainly sympathetic to the ombudsman, you know, wanting privacy and all that. I, I think City Hall's fairly underutilized, and there's quiet corners all over the place. I mean, City Council has to find conference rooms all over the place, and I've had to even exit the building to find space where I could actually take a meeting, because we do not have private offices. And there is no privacy on the seventh floor. So I'm, I'm certainly sympathetic to it, and, and open to it, but I, I think that there's probably some alternative ways that they could make it work in the meantime.
Okay, I want to make sure that we're.
Can I have a quick rebuttal, and then I'll be done?
But before you do that, I want to make sure that everybody gets a chance to pitch their stuff, and then there's questions, rather than the back and forth of rebuttal.
Okay, thank you.
Because you're going to get to rebut till the cows come home.
Yes, okay, in that case, I'll, I'll move on.
But if you want to.
But I just say, that office is located on the first floor, when you come into City Hall, and to have to, they can come in right there, we get to have security badges and go up and, throughout the building. But if you're a citizen who is new to our building, and there's a significant number of people who have never been in City Hall before, and don't know how to navigate this space, so I certainly agree that council members have the same struggle. We have different issues, though, on the seventh floor, than what the ombudsman has on the first floor, so that's why I'm in support. But I'm certainly open to looking for other resources in our budget to make that happen if we can't get it through ARPA funding. So thank you, Matt. Councilmember Cackart.
Okay, Councilmember Stratton, you're next. I know, don't be nervous, just.
I'm not nervous.
Tell us about, tell us, just talk to us.
Okay. Okay, so like I said, I, I don't think that I did this right, but I, I think I can get through this. One of my big priorities that I sponsored was assistance to the aging and the long-term care of Eastern Washington, and that's programs in housing for seniors. I mean, I think we can all agree, we've talked about ARPA funds and rental assistance, but you rarely, or at least I have rarely heard about the struggles that seniors have, trying to make those rent payments when they keep going up. The, one of the pieces that they wrote was that the, that population has had difficulty accessing rental assistance due to the technology barriers, confusion around applications, and cognitive loss leading to barriers and supporting documents. So this is an organization that really could use the funding to sit with these clients, with our elderly population, and help them get through that system if they need rent or back pay to landlords, that's what the request is. So I, I just think that became one of my, one of my priorities, because we sometimes forget about the older generation and the seniors and the elderly in our community that are surviving, trying to survive like we are, but don't necessarily have the wherewithal or the knowledge on how to get help and resources. So that was, and I guess that would go under what would be the funding for, the umbrella for that, I don't know.
You don't have to.
Do I have to give you an umbrella?
No, but that would be housing.
It'd be supporting senior citizens in housing protections, okay.
You don't have to give us an umbrella, just.
Okay, but I do have umbrellas on some of these.
I'm sure you do.
Okay, so I had that one, and, yeah, and I think the title of that was Funding to Help with Navigating Rental Assistance for Elderly and Senior Citizens. I also had the Garland Business District, an investment which would go under the small business centers. If, Garland Business District is a lot like the West Central Neighborhood, it's been ignored for a very, very long time. It's just about, I think, to pop, in that there's going to be some development on Garland for housing and more retail, and so I think now is the time to start looking at that district. The businesses came together and did put in an application for some infrastructure improvements, but also some development of open spaces. So that definitely is a priority. It's in my district, and I support what they're doing. And again, I think that, that's going to be an up-and-coming center that people are going to start noticing pretty soon, but they need some help with infrastructure. Under housing and homelessness, I mean, I, I just looked at those when we were talking, and, I mean, certainly, I support funding for Family Promise, the Volunteers of America Program, Northeast Community Center. So that would be under that housing and homelessness. Okay, let me get to, my list is short. Funding, help with rental assistance. Oh, one of my priorities is replenish lost funds to community center programs due to COVID. I mean, we all can agree that community centers are kind of the pulse of our neighborhoods, and they have lost a lot of funding, and I would like to have something available for them to make themselves whole and continue doing the good work, and expanding some of the good work they're doing. So that would be under that community center umbrella. And what else do I have? I have say yes to education, I put that down, and.
What's your gardening supply library?
Yeah, what is that?
That was on my list, and I, if you give me a, a little bit, I will look and see where that fits in.
Okay.
Okay.
We can come back to you if we have time.
You come back to me.
All right.
Okay. I think it was a, I think it's a Gonzaga thing, but I'm going to check.
Okay. Does anyone have questions for Councilmember Stratton?
Don't have questions, please.
All right. We won't have questions for you. So, we're going to do Council President last, so let's move to Councilmember Cackart.
Sure. So, I guess, first and foremost, number one for me is getting the $500,000 that we've committed to the Northeast Community Center for Northeast Behavioral Health, to get that, that check written and out the door and in their hands as a, as a direct allocation that they don't need to pay back to the city. That's, first and foremost, my number one priority. I've, I've talked at length about this, so I won't go into further details, but super important that we get that funded. The state has kicked in money, the county has kicked in money, Multicare is kicking in money. We're the only ones who have not yet participated. So that's really important, that we get in, involved in that and get that done. In fact, there is some risk, if it's not done by July, I think that they might lose some, some funding that they have, so. Okay, so then my other two kind of big priorities, and I've got a list beyond that, too, that I will go through. My other two priorities, NEPDA funding, so Northeast Public Development Authority, obviously, this is a struggling part of our community, and we've only had a paid director up there for about three, maybe three and a half years. And unfortunately, right now, we have a vacancy in our exec director, but we are really close, I think, to making a hire, and so that'll be done hopefully in the next month. But what would be great is our, if our executive director who comes in, gets to come in and have a little bit of a resource to actually use to advance some of our priorities. And so there is, there is no limit to the amount of things that we need to fund in the NEPDA. But a couple of examples, or a big example of something that would work and comply with the guidelines, is water infrastructure. The Wellesley project alone is going to have around $750,000 in water infrastructure needs, and there's the possibility that we could perhaps cover the cost of our match by covering that portion of the water cost through ARPA. So a little bit of a question on how that works, but that's a big one. Rowan is going to need a lot of water work as well, when that happens in the next couple of years, as well as Freya, I believe is going to have around $5 million in water work when it comes due. And then we've also talked about a sub-area plan for the NEPDA, and that could cost upwards of $400,000 or $500,000 on its own. So my, my, my real request is a one-to-one match, a million from the city, a million from the county. I've sent a letter to the county, and I've been in contact with them, and I, I do think that there is consideration for it, if we are also willing to put money in, in the pot. So that's my first. Number two, you know, one of the big things, I think, with ARPA that we need to focus on and try to advance is some sort of a big idea that's going to have an immediate impact, but really a long-lasting legacy and impact going forward through the years. And I think that the Say Yes to Education campaign, the launch Northwest, is possibly that, and that is my second priority. I, I think that finding a way to effectively cover scholarships for every child in the region who wants to go to school or, or trade school, which is really important right now, is probably something that would make us super competitive with the rest of the country. There's not a lot of cities who've done this, there are a few, Buffalo's a great example, but this is something that will help all the kids in our community to, to reach that next level of education or trade school, and I think that this could be something that in 25 years, we look back on as a pivot point, where we really made a true investment that is going to have a long-lasting effect on our community. So that's my second. Beyond that, and I've got a list here, I'll go through them, no particular order, business supports for Northeast Spokane, so I had put $5 million specifically for this, when I put this together. Don't have a detailed, robust plan, but the idea is that we would be granting money to the struggling businesses in Northeast who have been struggling to survive or barely holding on throughout all of this. We've lost a lot of restaurants, we've lost a lot of service folks, and if there's anything that we can do to put some money in a pot to give those businesses a leg up, that's going to be super, super, super important. Beyond that, we've got Mini Haha Park. So North Spokane does not have a major park, there is no regional park in North Spokane. This Mini Haha is a fantastic legacy of Spokane's, it abuts Beacon Hill, it has a ton of possibility and opportunity, as well as an old film studio that's still on site, there's just so much that you can do with that property. And so the goal is, and it is in the Parks Plan that was just approved, we're going to, we need to elevate this park to something that's sort of akin to a Manitow, that level of investment and quality and amenities for the community. Obviously, it would have its own character and its own, its own design, we're not trying to mimic Manitow in any way, but we want something on the north side of town that is similar to, to Manitow in that, in that sense. And this is a, a great opportunity. And just a couple of things, so I had talked to, and this is a year ago, I think, when I put this together, I had talked to Garrett at the time, and he sort of thought that between some design work and some planning and just play equipment, so this wouldn't be other things, just those three things, would be around $625,000. And so of course, there's a lot more we need to do beyond that, but, but this would be a great start and a great investment to kick that, to kick that off with. Park, well, community lighting is another one. And so one of the big things, obviously, crime is a concern for, for me and a lot of people, and one way that we can, I think, combat crime is simply by creating safer neighborhoods, and we can do that with more lighting. I had talked to a Vista last year, just around what the cost of something like this would be, and, so I had put in here about, about $100,000 a year. We could add around 50 new lights per neighborhood in Northeast Spokane. And so this would be around 450 total, and the approximate cost would be around $77,000 to $113,000. Really, the, the question mark there is the poll cost, which ranges $14 to $21 a month, and then kind of which lighting you choose, et cetera. So, but I think there's an opportunity to create much safer alleys, much safer streets, much safer neighborhoods and parks, and keep people feeling safe in their neighborhoods with that simple investment. I had put speed radar trailers in here, I feel like we have an opportunity for every neighborhood to have a speed radar trailer, that would make a ton of sense, they could have some control over where it goes, how long it's there, we could create guidelines, but giving each neighborhood the ability to control that for themselves is really important. I had also included the Northeast Fixed Wi-Fi Pilot, this is something that, actually, Councilwoman Wilkerson and I had talked. Fixed Wi-Fi Pilot. This is something that actually Councilman Wilkerson and I had talked with a, a company about. And I know there's a lot going on with broadband, so I won't emphasize this one too much, but I just think it's important that we're not, that we're technology agnostic. We don't, it, it, the, the point should be providing the access. It shouldn't necessarily be the technology. And so let's find the most cost-efficient, effective way to do it. And so I think fixed Wi-Fi is a really interesting one that deserves some, some hard look. But, but again, I think technology agnostic is the way to go. Children's Fire Safety House. So I don't know how many have done this as a child, but when I was a kid in elementary school, the, the firefighters would come out. They'd bring this kind of portable house with them, and they'd teach you all about fires in the home and how to, what you do and how you respond. And, you know, partly fun and partly for education. They'd fill the whole thing with smoke, and you'd have to, you know, crawl out and all this stuff. Really educational, a really good deal. And the fire department has had a, a house for, I think, 20-some years. It's decrepit. It's falling apart. It just doesn't do the job. They would like to get a new one. I put that on my list. It's about 200, $250,000 for that. And so I think that would be a great amenity. And frankly, I'd be open to talking to the school district and see if it's something they would want to partner on, because it's something specifically that the fire department takes to the schools to educate them. And then I had also included youth sports participation. I think we've kind of included that in a different bucket that we had approved previously. But I really just, as that RFP goes forward, making sure that we have opportunities there for all different types of sports, whether it's team sports, individual sports, those sorts of activities that they could all sort of apply and provide some, some opportunities for lower income or disadvantaged youth to participate in what they're doing. And then the last one I have, not the least of which, but the last on my list, is the HVAC system repairs at the MLK Family Outreach Center. I don't have the cost in front of me, but I believe it's somewhere around $700,000, if I remember correctly, for, to fix that. Right now, the HVAC system only works in a portion of the building, and therefore there are portions of that building that are very, very uncomfortable. And so they are hoping to get this fixed. And so I've included that on, on my list. So let me just make sure there's nothing that I have. Oh, the last one that I had included as well was transparency, community accessibility. So one of the things I think we've kind of missed the boat a little bit on, and we still have a lot of opportunity to, to, to push this, is just trying to make sure that the community understands how they can access our meetings, watch what we're doing, know what we're up to. And yes, we're on Channel Five, and yes, we, we're on Facebook, and yes, we do these things. But how many people actually know that, pay attention to that, visit our Facebook page to see that our meetings are streaming? I would argue it's a very small relative number in our, compared to the number in our community. And I think that we could consider a marketing campaign to just push Channel Five and to push these resources out there so that folks know, hey, Monday night at 6 o'clock, council meeting. This is how I watch. This is where I go. This is what I do. And I think we could have a big push. And so I had included that. I kind of made up a number, 300,000, but, but I just, I included that because I think making sure that people have access to what we're doing is really important. So.
Any questions for Councilmember Cathcart? Go ahead, Councilmember Wilkerson.
Just to comment, so I see our Channel Five team put their thumbs up for that request. And I was going to comment. So the firehouse was there when you were a kid, and now it's all decrepit, need to be replaced.
Yeah, well, I.
So you're as old as the firehouse.
Well, I, I think this is a different firehouse.
Oh, different firehouse, okay.
But, but.
Okay.
So imagine how old and decrepit the first one would be.
Just, just.
Good.
Thank you, Councilmember Cathcart.
Um, I, you know what, and if we had some more in, so our council, I just want to comment on the more marketing around our council meetings. Maybe if they were a little livelier, people would watch. I just.
Want to throw eggs at each others?
We could do that. I mean, they used to be. Do you remember in the day, that, you know, and I'm not going to name names, but they used to be really lively.
I had a gal 10 years ago tell me that she kept a box of socks next to her TV just for Monday nights. She'd watch City Council, and she would chuck those socks at the TV.
Yeah, see, that, we need to get back to that.
So then I would add to my list, funding for a box of socks for citizens who'd like to apply.
Perfect. Perfect. All right. So we're going to pivot to Councilmembers Sapon, who is not on the line, but his assistant Jeff is. Jeff, do you want to go ahead? And let's, let's keep it to 10 minutes. It is 11:55, so at 12:05, you're done.
All right, you got it. Thank you, Councilmember Kneer. Zach does have 16, so I will do my best to go through it in a timely manner. So his first one is neighborhood business districts. So this would be funding for all business districts in Spokane. There'd be four components, facade improvement, such as how North Monroe and East Sprague were, streetscape, lighting, furniture, parklets for outdoor dining, an event space, and then events. And then his second priority is homelessness. So we're currently on the working group for that RFP, putting together the guidelines right now. And so we're looking at just really addressing mental health and addiction, providing a clean, safe place to use the bathroom, access to clean water, throw garbage away, a regional coordinated, intensive case management system to deliver better outcomes. And we're looking to add 1,000 permanent housing units to Spokane County's inventory of affordable housing in the near future. And then, so going through the list now, there's no specific order. I'm just going to go through it and then leave time for questions. So the next one is multicultural centers. This is going to be community center space for multicultural groups. Next one is bike and pedestrian infrastructure. So this is bike racks, bike lanes, sidewalk repair, crosswalks, anything having to do with bicycle transportation and pedestrians. Next one is local tourism. So we know that local tourism took a massive hit throughout the pandemic, and organizations such as Sports Commission, PFD, and Visit Spokane bid for events and conferences to come to Spokane. These funds typically come from hotel stays, so beds, but there is obviously a dramatic decrease in this throughout the pandemic. So we're hoping to provide funding to ensure that these events and conferences can still come to Spokane in the next few years. And additionally, every $1 the city spends, there's a return of $7 of positive economic impact. So there would be a portion of that money coming to the general fund, as I understand it, through taxes. Next one is downtown amenities. So this would be public restrooms, alleyway activation, anything to improve our downtown core. And then we are also interested in minority business support. So this is similar to Councilmember Wilkerson's proposal, also hoping to include funding for a position for a procurement specialist to help the city contract with minority businesses. The next one is participatory budgeting. So this would be a set amount of money per district where community members beyond just the neighborhood councils can generate ideas for ways to improve their neighborhood. They would vote on projects and allocate funding. I think we all know that neighborhood councils aren't necessarily the best representation of the entire neighborhood. So this would be a way for us to try and engage those people that aren't typically involved and ensure that their voices are heard as well. The next one is healthcare workforce training. So the healthcare workforce has been hit hard by COVID. There's very high burnout right now. So this funding would help to pay, to train and build the workforce, which would provide good family wages. Programs like the CHAS Institute would need funds to train workers, to purchase equipment, capital projects, and staffing. I believe the federal government has invested in this already, though they would need more funding to have it come to fruition. So this would act as gap funding. The next one is broadband Wi-Fi, relatively self-explanatory, so I'll go through that one pretty quick. Next one is Say Yes Education, Law Northwest, which Councilmember Cathcart did a great job explaining, also in support of that. The next one is a land bank. So this would be requesting funds to create a land bank. 10% would be used for the administration or staffing, and the rest of the money would go to land purchases, real estate, and legal fees. The next one is Shared Equity Housing Fund. So this would be a fund targeting buyers with incomes between 60 and 80% of the area median income. Based on current projections, there will be a funding gap of 2.4 million. We believe this ARPA funding would be ideal to fill this gap because of its flexible nature. Furthermore, these dollars would leverage a potential $8.3 million in additional funding from outside financing sources. And then the last one is funding to improve City Hall communications, specifically for hybrid meetings. So moving forward, I think it's clear we're going to keep having hybrid meetings. So I think it's important to provide funding and ensure that our technology at City Hall is up to date and effective at, at hybrid meetings. So that is what I have. I know that was a lot and quick, but I am open to any questions you may have. Thank you.
Jeff, thanks. Councilmember Cathcart has a question.
No, I, I don't.
Oh, you don't. You look expectant. Okay. Anybody else have a question? Jeff, that was great. And you did it virtually, so appreciate that. It's a little bit harder to do that way. All right.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, I'm going to go next, and then Council President, and then we're going to have a, a little, you'll go after Council President.
I'll clarify, yeah.
Yes, because we'll move that C minus up to perhaps a B plus.
Maybe.
I, I have a theme in mind, and that is mostly about water conservation in parks and, and getting parks up to snuff. The, the one thing that is really on top of my list is the Cannon Hill Pond lining. Right now, that lining leaks. We have a pump there because there's wildlife. Kids use it in the winter to play hockey because it's not real deep. It freezes quickly. But it leaks about 20 million gallons a year. That's a huge amount of water, and I think we can do better. It would cost about 1.4 million to put a, a liner in that pond and restore it the way it should be. The other outlier I have is 20 million for police and fire capital. And we know they need this. I don't see another way forward to get this money. It's really important for our community. And then 500,000 for ADU permit fee reimbursement. So it'd make it cheaper for people, for Karen, if she wants to build an ADU in her backyard, you could do that without having that permitting. So it just saves you that little bit of money. What I did with the rest of this is I looked at what we want to do as an agency because, and I keep using this same analogy, when you're on the airplane and the flight attendant comes around and says, okay, if the mask drops, puts it on, put it on your face first, then help other people. If we can make our city whole, I think we're in a better position to help our constituents and our community. So the other ones that you see here, so real-time for water meters, smart meters, efficiency upgrades to city buildings, parks on, I got this water theme going, parks automated water projects, updating the irrigation system in parks, not just the ones in my district. I'm trying to look more globally about our whole city. Splash pad water conservation, we have those throughout the city, turf conversion, so we're not watering so much lawn. And then utility bill delinquencies. What do we have here? Marlene, we've got about 5 million in utility billing that is delinquent. That's really important that we make that, that department whole. And Recycle Right program, that's also under Marlene. Parking hardware, we know during COVID, we lost a lot of money because people weren't coming downtown to shop. That's two years' worth of no parking revenue. So we want to make sure that we have that whole going forward for our business community downtown. And then Hannah Lee added for me, chambers and briefing center tech upgrades. So that goes right back to Channel Five and making sure that you guys are whole and have all that you need and are able to, yep, he's given me the thumbs up. Thanks. That, so that we can go forward and really be able to communicate with our constituency and our citizens. So I'm welcome, go ahead.
Well, I'm just curious if you know, so during all of our water conversations, somebody had reached out to me and said that, that they wondered why we let Cannon remain filled all year. And they said that apparently the Olmsted Plan, when it was created, was that it would dry out in the summer.
Yeah.
And so i- is that kind of changed?
And so that's the big conundrum, because what happened is, all of a sudden, we have all kinds of animals that use this. So we have painted turtles. We have blue herons, ducks, geese, fish, and unfortunately, bullfrogs, which the neighbors really wish. And my solution was, let's build a French restaurant nearby so that we could harvest those frogs. But that didn't go over too well. So.
It's an option.
I, it's an option. So you're right, we could let it go dry, but then those animals would go, they would die. They, we wouldn't have those. It's a, it's a real focal point for the neighborhood. We don't, you know, you, you mentioned Manitow. Manitow is a destination park. So in any given day, if those of us who live there go to Manitow, there are, there's a wedding, there's an anniversary, there's a graduation, there's all kinds of stuff going on there. So it is a destination park, and we do need another one. I do feel that way. So I want to make sure Parks is whole. And I, I'm open to that, let it go dry. It used to be a brickyard, as you might recall. So there's clay under there. We could go back to making bricks, I suppose. But it is a park now. It is also a dry well for the storm gardens that come down Lincoln. So if, if at any point, we have such increased rainfall that that dry well fills up, it will then go into the pond. It's, it's designed so that that, it will feed the pond as well. So it's not just a standalone thing.
Okay.
That makes sense. Councilmember Wilkerson.
I'm just asking for clarity on utility assistance. When 5 million, is that citizens or citizens and businesses?
And Marlene is here. I bet she could answer that for us.
Thank you, Marlene.
So for residential accounts, we're at about $5.9 million, and commercial makes up the rest. We're a little over seven, we're north of 7 million at this point. We did put in our application to Commerce, so we started that process to see if we can get some of those funds. It's, it's pretty limited, at least the way we're currently being told how it's going to work, that you had to have received assistance. So people have received assistance through our programs, and then we worked with a Vista to get their population as well. So currently, what we've qualified is about 1.1 million of that 5.9, 5.9 for residential customers through that Commerce program. We don't know if they'll, if they'll expand it, if they don't get enough of people who did that. Also, the, the rent assistance, I'm trying to work with those folks to highlight that the utility assistance is available as well. So even if they're not overdue on rent right now, but they have a past due utility account, they can still apply for rental assistance and get, and get that support. So if people ask about that, that's another avenue. We've gotten a little bit of the LIWAP dollars, those were federal dollars that passed through Commerce and came to us. And those are still being distributed. But again, the, the, the levels of income are very low for that. And so a lot of people don't qualify for that particular program. So I don't know if, if Commerce can work with the feds to change some of those income standards to maybe make it a little more universal for our customers. All right. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Question, I'm not sure who, who would know the answer, but I wonder if we get to a point where we still have rental assistance money, but we've kind of satisfied the bulk of the need, can, can some of that money just be directly allocated into utilities to wipe out some of those?
That's a really good question. I, I haven't asked that question, but I, I think that could be something we should look at, for sure. Because, you know, what I would tell you is that, I mean, people didn't get that far behind in the utilities if they, if they had funding to pay for it, for the most part. I mean, so if there's a way to do a more broad approach to getting assistance to those customers, that's important. We don't want to shut off thousands of customers. It's just, for one, it's untenable. And what the damage we would do to the housing stock in this housing crisis is, is, it just doesn't even make any sense. So whatever we can do to help those customers and still be able to do utility projects. And once we get them caught up, I think we have a fair chance. We've always been able to collect more than 99% of what we bill out. So we're just, we've just gotten into this pattern, and it's, and it's hard for those folks to come out of a 2,000 or 3,000 dollar hole.
So, go ahead.
So Marlene, as we talk about this, because this is, again, I'm confused. So when we talk about making the city, and maybe this is for Brian, when we talk about these items that are making, that we want to make the city whole, departments, customers, that kind of thing. Did you go through this process where you filled out the application, or you filled out the statement saying this is what kind of money we need and turn it into the committee? Or where is, where are those ass? I mean, how do we know those, where are those sitting? Because that changes.
I think Councilmember Wilkerson has answered.
Well, there's two kind of categories. There's revenue replacement, and those are the funds where I'm thinking makes the city whole, utilities, police, those things that are, what I say, I'm saying in-house. And then there's the other funding, which is outward facing and community. So as you see on this back page here, the last one, the administration has submitted priorities.
Okay, so that's part of.
Okay, so that's part of-
Yeah, so, and we did submit through the council's process as well.
Okay.
So we've submitted through, because it's, it's both. We technically, utilities don't qualify for formal revenue replacement, but it comes in with utility support for the citizens, which then supports, ultimately supports the utilities as well as the citizens. So, but it is considered direct support for citizens because it's, it's their individual bill. And in the state of Washington, one customer can't subsidize another customer. So that's where we get into, into some challenges, which is why the, the help would go to the customer, so that you don't end up, like, erasing debt, because then you'd be subsidizing, which can get us afoul of state law.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Marlene, thank you. Appreciate it. I'm going to quickly go over the administration priorities before we hear from Councilmember Beggs. So the first one was the ADA update, 500 or 50,000. Public meeting enhancements. So some of these you see as repetitious of what we are asking as well, for about 200,000. Public records technology, we all know how strained that department is, and we do need a little bit more help there and quicker, so the technology could help us out. Emergency call boxes on the bridge, and that is for suicide prevention generally, but other emergencies that might occur on Monroe Street Bridge. Parking fund solvency, and I touched on that in my priority, and then utility support, which Marlene just briefed us on.
I, I think they've got others they're bringing next week, too.
Yeah, this is just the ones that we have right now. So Council President, do you want to go ahead? You have 10 minutes. I will cut you off.
All right, you won't have to.
Okay.
Because I appreciate the role that you're in. So my top two are first, an educational and support program for legacy business owners who want to sell their companies to their employees. And just given the baby boomer retirements, this is a trend that's going on around the nation, and much like we believe that people who own their homes are better off financially and better contributors to the community, people who own their businesses are, we assume are in the same situation. And GSI has been looking into this, and then we also have a local cooperative owner association that's trying to increase this. And so the idea is to set aside $500,000 for education and legal support. You know, it's not a mandatory, it's a voluntary, but for those legacy businesses that want to make that shift, to give them the resources to make it easier to do, so they're not reinventing the wheel, and some outreach to that. So I think that would have a real strong long-term economic benefit to us and avoid the problem of owners selling to out-of-town, people who may or may not keep the business here, or they may not even keep the business going. So that's my top priority. And then my second one is an educational program and other programming with probably credit unions to help the portion of the community that are unbanked get banked. So there's a whole group of people who are working, and they just don't have bank accounts. They, and they don't have enough, find enough money and cash flow to do it, or they don't understand the benefits of it. And there are very successful programs around the country that increase people being banked. And it just, it takes a different kind of outreach and education, and frankly, a different type of service that's designed for these people that are right on the edge of being banked or unbanked. And I think we got a proposal idea from Numerica, not that they would necessarily be the ones to win the RFP, but that they're ready to participate, and I think other credit unions would, too. So I think, again, if you look at all the money people lose by doing check cashing services and just not having banks, it's just, it's a crazy spiral that the poorest of the poor get even poorer than those of us who have banked. After that, my next priority is downtown restrooms. And basically, these are the Portland Loups that are designed so they can prevent people from barricading themselves in there, and drug use, and they're easy to clean, and they're, they're, I think we need probably about four of them, which would be about $500,000, last time I checked, at, you know, locations that the community could figure out would be best. That would really decrease, hopefully, people using sidewalks for bathrooms and all the impact on small business owners and real estate owners downtown, as well as people who are unhoused, and also, though, just people visiting who don't know where to go. So that would be in the downtown core and possibly extending to the North Bank. My next priority is the Downtown Cultural Trail, and that is, you know, that is already planned out, it's already set up, it just needs, I think, about $150,000 more dollars to get that really going. And then, similar to what other people have mentioned, a grant program to neighborhood business associations, from hardscape to programming, and I just think we should make a program citywide rather than focusing on any particular one, and then they could apply for those grants. And then similar to that theme is a grant program for the four public development authorities. They're each different and have different needs. We're mostly familiar with the three that are up and running at the moment, but there is a fourth Native American Public Development Authority that's created by ordinance and is just ready to get going again. So I think we should set aside, you know, some significant money for all four that they could apply for. And I, the only other thing I would say is I endorse a lot of the other programs for community centers, nonprofits, all those, and just, I think we need to do grant programs generally for those things as opposed to getting too targeted. With that, I'll take any questions.
Questions for Council President. I have us all in awe. Thank you. No questions. Now, Councilmember Stratton has a few additions. Is that right?
Yeah, I want to clarify. So had somebody said Growing Neighbors, I would have known exactly what that was. It's under Northwest Harvest Spokane, so this was a, a, an application that came in, which I did say yes, I would sponsor it. And again, I just took the list of the things that I had my name on. And it's asking for funds. So if anybody's aware of Growing Neighbors, they work with neighborhoods, and it's going on big time in, in Northwest. I'm seeing it all over the place, where they're tearing up lawns and they're putting in garden beds. And then the neighborhoods work together to plant these gardens and share the food. So it was asking for funds that would equip neighbors with gardening supplies and really emphasize in neighborhoods that are marginalized, those marginalized communities. So yes, that's what that was, and that is one of my priorities. The other thing I wanted to say is, and Matt, if you're still with us, I know that there are, I'll, I'll use the LIWAP Festival just because it's near and dear to my heart. They did fill out an application looking for, to try and regain some of the lost funds that they experienced during COVID, I'm sure, and I know a lot of those other organizations did, too. I was thinking about this as we talk about the special events ordinance that's coming up, is that at some point, I think it would be really smart for us to try and access some of these funds to put aside for those organizations, those smaller nonprofits that are doing parades and community events, to help cover those city fees. Because I'm hearing from a lot of them that they're not going to be able to, I know this year's free, but as it continues, they're not going to be able to cover those costs. So I guess I would add that to my list somewhere that we have, we, we use the money to start some funding for that. Other cities do it, and it might be the way for us to go.
So Council President, do you have a, a question on that?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that we already allocated money exactly for that. So we've already approved that. So it's a great idea, and we've already adopted it.
Thank you.
And I'll just expand on that. That was our kickoff information on cultural incentive grants over the next three years. So that gives nonprofits or community parades additional time to figure out their funding. But, and they were present at this informational meeting, the LIWAP, and many of the others of how to access funding to help with those types of events.
So we're doing that outreach to these organizations, so they'll know where to apply for the funding.
Absolutely. Really, we had to kick off yesterday.
Perfect. Okay.
Okay. Good. Anything else? Councilmember Stratton.
No, I think that's it, and I'll, I'll be smarter next time. Sorry.
You're always smart. Anything for the good of the order or to wrap this up?
I've still hung up on the old firehouse and-
I know.
-Councilmember Cathcart's age, so, but other than that, I'm done.
I did think that maybe we should put some money aside for bullfrogs.
Okay.
To save the bullfrogs in Manitow.
Okay.
Yeah, give them a place to-
Yes, well, you'll have to give some-
Up in District.
Bullfrog mansions.
Might be great.
Okay, that's great.
They can be relocated.
That's right.
To Minnehaha.
They have some on Five Mile and some of those garden, HOA swales.
And they're cute.
Yeah, not at night, they're not. So keep you awake, yeah. Council President, do you have anything to add? Right, we hope you enjoy the rest of your stay. I'm assuming we'll see you on Monday? Okay, here, I mean, here. Yes, great. Okay, good. Thank you. We are going to reconvene on Monday at 3:30, and then again at 6 o'clock. So until then, we'll see you all, and we are adjourned.